Do we all rise for a pledge to the flag?
A pledge to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, can we have a roll call attendance, please?
Here.
Is it Baratino?
Here.
Is it Vaughn?
Here.
The truck?
Here.
The road?
Here. Here. Okay. All the board members should have received the minutes from the June 17 meeting. If there's no discussion regarding the minutes, entertain a motion to accept.
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, motions made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed, seeing none, motion carries. Okay. All right, the first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing regarding Old State Road amended site plan. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So I'll move.
Second.
The motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, seeing none, motion carries.
Good evening.
Good evening. Just to give the board an update from where we were at the last meeting.
Okay.
We addressed the town engineer's comments regarding providing some more clarity and detail. The ADA ramp, the difference between the existing walkway and proposed concrete, and then we also proposed some spot elevations in the driveway area that we're regrading and reshaping, just to show that we meet ADA access and grade and that we have drainage flowing away from the town road. I think the only comment the town engineer really had that is just ensuring that on the lower side of the parking lot that we have an interceptor swell that kind of picks up any drainage coming off our parking lot and directs it toward an existing culvert underneath the town road. No problem there, we can add that to the plan. And I think we addressed some of the comments that Malcolm had at his last comment letter. We changed the tree type, and I think we tightened up some of the parking and some of the radiuses, just to be in more conformance with the town code.
Okay. So with the discussion, I guess, that we had earlier, Malcolm, regarding the parking spaces?
Yes, we pointed out two things on the plans. The first, very briefly, was the bollards that we discussed for the refuse enclosure. That's something that Bruce had mentioned in the last meeting. I had misunderstood you when you were describing them.
Yeah.
Since then, we've had a discussion. They would be inside the refuse enclosure, preventing the dumpster from gliding with the back of the refuse enclosure.
Yeah.
That'd be an easy add.
Yeah, just so the garbage truck doesn't destroy the enclosure.
Makes sense.
Yeah. And then the other comment that I had made was to keep the board updated on how the parking space redesign had been incorporated. Last time you were here, we talked about a parking waiver for two additional spaces for overflow should guests arrive at the property. The planning board was interested in granting that if the additional spaces were made to be gravel, and we talked about, you know, creating a wide gravel apron off of the entrance drive or something like that, so those cars would have a place to pull off. The changes to the plans, we've got a row along, I guess that's the east side of the parking area, of five spaces. Two of those are now proposed to be gravel. I raised that just because, looking at the plans, you know, I would scratch my head if I came into a parking lot and there was a row of five parking spaces, and two of them were gravel and three of them were paved. So, you know, I leave it up to the board. You can, if you wanted to change that and move those gravel parking spaces, you can make the full row gravel and save a little money on construction and reduce impervious cover. I'd be curious to know which direction the board would like to see that in.
So what's the board's feeling on this?
I would think either way.
Yeah?
All gravel or all blacktop, because I think the original intention was, hey, add two more spots, you know, you could stick them off on the other side or something and just make them gravel.
Yeah.
I would think that the easiest way would be to create a gravel shoulder that would accommodate two additional cars off of the entrance drive.
Perfect, we can do that.
If you do that, you will need to move one of the two proposed trees, but where those two spots were would be a perfect place to put one of those two trees. So I think that would be the easiest to fix, as opposed to, now you still have six paved spaces and overflow.
We can do it.
Cool.
Okay. All right. So either way, I mean, they'll just let him make the decision, whatever you guys want to do, I guess, at this point, if nobody has any objection to that. No. All right. The engineering issues are addressed. There's a public hearing, so is the board have any questions before we open up the floor?
Nope, none here.
No? All right, let's open up the floor, see if anybody has any comments. Is there anybody here from the public that wishes to speak on behalf of this application?
Did you?
You did, yes.
Yeah, we did. Okay, seeing none. At this point, no sense in keeping it open, so entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move that, second.
Okay, a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, seeing none, motion carries. All right, so I guess at this point, there's the matter of, I guess, addressing the final, you know, submitting a final submission. But I think we're pretty much in a good position, right, to draft a resolution? Because it's really not going to affect anything?
Yeah.
The engineering comments could be conditional?
I would say that all of the items discussed could be conditions of approval.
Okay. So, wishes will authorize the planner to draft a resolution of approval?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, seeing none, motion carries. Okay. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is Central Hudson Gas and Electric Chelsea HPF FDC cable terminal replacement.
Good evening. This is my member, Dave Tompkins, with CHA Consulting, and I have a new partner tonight, Cliff A., with Central Hudson. Morris Reed resigned his position at Central Hudson, so Cliff is taking over the project. And I have their Central Hudson engineers as well to answer any questions you may have.
Okay.
Again, as you, I listened to your workshop, and I think a lot of the questions have been answered. Malcolm did bring up the fact that we have received a no effect letter from Shipout. We did consult with Dr. Jocelyn Ferguson of Shipout, and she directed us specifically where to look. It was a 1991 study by Hartgen that identified some artifacts out there. We did look in that area, we did not find anything, so they're not recoverable at this point. We have not heard anything from the DEC either. We did, for full disclosure, we did get an email from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service suggesting that we did not do an IPAC, which is a database search for their wildlife species. We mailed them our IPAC, we did do it, because it was part of the EAF. So that's an administrative thing on their end, but we did do it, it's in the EAF and it was submitted. And the only ecological issues really on this project are bats and bald eagles. We're not doing any tree cutting, we may do some branch removal if we get near one of the edges of the right-of-way, but that's allowable anyway, because Central Hudson has a vegetation management program for that right-of-way, that they have to maintain that security zone between the lines. So they're not allowed to have woody vegetation within the right-of-way. So that's, it's kind of a no-brainer there. But we aren't planning any, doing any tree cutting, so there should be no impacts on bats. And eagle nesting is over, the birds are fledged out of the nest, so there really is no impact at this time of year.
Okay. All right. Anybody, any board members have any questions?
No. I don't.
Okay. Staff have any questions?
I had a question. This just came to my mind, I believe that it has been addressed, but Kyle, have you received the legal description for the access easement that they have across the neighboring property? So I remember that came up in one of our initial comment memos, that we just wanted to make sure that we have all of the legal documentation, I don't know if that had been submitted or not.
If that has, I haven't, I haven't found it.
Okay.
So if you could please look into that, that would be...
Yeah, I would gladly follow up on that. That would come from the real property office of Central Hudson, and I'll follow up, because I personally don't have that. But it's an existing easement, so...
Yeah.
And there is an agreement for using the Primley's driveway. I believe it's the Primley's, hope I have the name right. But there is an agreement that I know of to use that.
Yeah, if we can get a description of that for the record, I think.
Okay.
Other than that...
Okay, just the easement that's kind of...
No, yeah, just something that popped into my head, I don't remember whether or not that got rounded out.
All right. Okay, if we have nothing else, then this is a public hearing, so entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So I'll move.
Okay, motion's made, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, seeing none, motion carries. So is there anybody here from the public that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Okay, seeing none.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Yeah, before we do so, we're pretty much down to the end of open issues for this?
I believe so.
In terms of, yeah, so basically Morrissey Environmental, or the DEC for the storm order?
Yeah.
Is more what we're worried about, and the SWIP has been submitted?
Have you, I mean, I can double-check the record, but have you submitted a wetland disturbance permit and a wetlands functionality report? Do we have both of those?
We haven't submitted a functionality report, because it's one small wetland that we're just crossing on the edge of it. It's, it's...
And it's a wet spot?
It's actually, the wet spot we're crossing is an existing driveway through, down the right-of-way. So we're basically crossing where the existing driveway is. Technically, we're in the buffer, and we're, because I mapped it out to where our culvert was, we are touching the wetland and we are touching the buffer, yes. And we will use matting, that's on our plans, we'll cross that via matting. And the wetland delineation report has been submitted, and the check will be with B tomorrow, with FedEx today. You have an application?
Yeah.
No delineation report?
I would double-check, let me pull up the number, I believe it's 137, the requirements of the wetland disturbance permit.
So we...
137, one, yes. So double-check chapter 137, look at the requirements for the permit, I believe, in addition to a form that looks like this.
Right.
Will be your basic wetlands functionality report, telling us, you know, what is the wetland that you are proposing to disturb?
Yeah.
And to what degree are you proposing to do so? That would include your wetland delineation map?
Yep.
And a brief description?
The delineation map is on our plans, okay? There was a quantification of the impact in the EAF, and that is also on the plans, which is, it's a mowed area, is what we're crossing.
Yeah.
It's kind of why we didn't do a functional assessment.
Let me just double-check the... Seven, yeah.
I can easily submit that. It won't be very long.
It won't be, but I think that that will round out, as we're waiting, that will be the last thing that we need before we can move forward with a resolution of approval to include that wetland disturbance permit in that resolution. We'll need a complete wetland permit application.
And as far as I know, we haven't received any responses yet to the initial comment, comment letter from our office, and I'm not sure if you guys have responded yet to the stormwater comments from...
Just verbally at the last meeting.
Okay.
The other gentleman was here, so we discussed it. We will submit a final plan set that addresses all those things.
Okay.
We just were waiting to, after the public hearing, to do that.
Okay, so we're, yeah. So the question comes, are we premature for closing the public hearing?
I don't necessarily think so. I mean, I don't think that the additional information that we're going to get on the wetland disturbance permit?
All right.
Yeah, the questions...
We have the information, we just need a complete record in order to move forward with granting that.
To move, right, to before we get approved.
Some of the questions were, like, what type of absorbent boom we're going to use on the containment area? It's going to be either a Spilltek or a PIG, those are the two companies that manufacture the best absorbent booms. That note will be added. Those are the kind of comments that are, that are changed. Nothing on square footage of disturbance, nothing on runoff control or erosion control. There was one question on slope going from the Primley's driveway up to the right-of-way, and I did speak to my engineers, and they did not think that would be a problem. It will be addressed by the contractor in the field, obviously, when they're cutting that road, they will make the final decision.
Well, the other, the question I had was just too, was the, you know, I'm not sure whose office is reviewing the SWIP now, is it?
It'll be Kohler's office, but we have questions, it'll be Dan Kohler's office that's reviewing.
So they haven't reviewed it yet?
Yes, yes, they have, we have a letter from...
Oh, you do have, okay.
Again, there was nothing major, I don't have the letter with me. No, I don't.
Okay.
But...
No, regarding what was on the, you talked from Dan Kohler's office?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, so no, I just, so, but we're not, you know, obviously, I mean, if we close the public hearing, there should be no issue going forward.
I don't, I don't think so. I think that we would be in a good position to close the public hearing and move the application forward.
Okay. All right, so with that, we've had a motion was made and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, seeing none, motion carries. Okay, so just wait until we get, you know, I guess at this point, just waiting for updated data before we can authorize a resolution.
Okay. So we'll finally submit 100% plans, okay.
Yeah.
Will we have to reappear for that, or?
There's still some outstanding comments.
Probably going to say...
You're going to, with your final submission, you're going to be responding to all of the comments in writing, right, to both our comments and then Hudson Land Design comments?
Right, and then there will be amendments and notes added to the plan.
Correct.
Yeah.
In response to those comments, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd leave it open-ended, because if, you know, there ends being, you know, if there ends up being conversation back and forth regarding it, you know, because I mean, if they submit everything 100%...
If, I mean, if both of our comment, I mean, if both of the comment memos come back, and both of them say, "We have no additional comments."
Correct.
Everything is taken care of, then it will just be the formality of authorizing it.
Correct, which we could do, and then the following time would be to actually vote on the resolution of approval. You know, unless we, unless we authorize the staff to go ahead and get this stuff done so that you can present a draft resolution at a future meeting, and then we could just vote on it, they don't have to be here for either of them.
If you would like to have a draft resolution for your consideration, assuming that everything has been taken care of, you can move on it.
Assuming everything has been addressed.
And if it hasn't, you know, that resolution will then need to be amended, I mean, it's entirely up to the board.
That makes sense.
All right?
Yeah.
It just saves, it's just going to save us time, I mean, it's just...
The applicant, the applicant did the right thing by waiting to make these changes until after the public hearing.
And there's nothing contentious.
And there hasn't been any...
No.
Right, no, no, I understand, yeah, so it's just a matter of, you know, but we're not in a position to authorize it, I guess, at this point, the draft resolution.
If we need to come back, we'll, we'll come back.
Yeah, so, all right. If you come back, I mean, we do the one shot, do you want, authorize the planner, the planner, engineer, and attorney to be able to review this outside the meeting in preparation for the next meeting, and have the planner provide a draft resolution for when they're next on the agenda? Is everybody in favor of that?
Yes.
Okay, somebody want to make that, basically make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, seeing none, motion carries. Okay, so...
Thank you, we'll work through the changes with your...
Work through with staff, and then once that's complete, they'll be followed to us for...
If not, we'll be back.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Okay. Next item is a discussion regarding Subin LLC subdivision.
Changing of the guard over there. Good evening, Mike Bodendorf, Hudson Land Design Engineer for the applicant. Since the last meeting, we did prepare the wetland evaluation reports, submitted it, it's memory reviewed, we received an email comment from the planner and a comment memo from the engineer, everything seems to be housekeeping at this point, to me.
Okay. All right, does the board have any questions for the applicant? Turn it over to staff? No?
No.
All right, I guess I think the...
To be, just to double-check something, I believe at the time that I drafted the resolution, I had not received your most recent letter, and that I was referencing the previous letter. Unless I have misread your most recent letter, it says that everything has been addressed and made...
The most recent letter, yes, I think everything's been addressed.
So there would be no reason to amend the resolution to reference your most recent letter, because the letter that had substantive comments that should be reviewed at the time of compliance?
They're made.
Is still the one that is being referenced in the resolution?
The same letter.
Which, which means that, yeah, I just wanted to double-check that with him, and yes, I think that you are, that there would not need to be any amendments made to the resolution as drafted.
Okay. All right, so with that, it's really, I don't think there's any real discussion, right, at this point? All right, so everything seems to be in order. You've read through the resolution, obviously, no, you have no issues with the resolution?
Yep.
Okay, so then going forward, if the board's inclined, entertain a motion to approve the resolution as drafted?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, so these, the motions made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, seeing none, motion carries. So you're all set?
Okay, we'll get our health department, and we'll submit final plans once that's all taken care of.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all, good night.
Thank you, it's good seeing you.
Nice seeing you.
Nice job.
Silence is always the best option when you're sitting here.
Good night.
Okay. All right. On to the next item on the agenda, we have a conceptual review, Tixera, 2346 Route 9D.
Hello, I'm Lauren Ryan, this is John Tishara, and we're here to request the board's approval to add services and offices to be allowed uses for 2346 Route 9D. Since the building was acquired, it's been used as a cabinet store, initially occupied by Wayne's Cabinets for about five years. Wayne has since relocated the business to Route 9, where he continues to operate. After his department, John utilized the building as an office for his business maintenance men. Currently, Jasmine Toro is the tenant, and she wants to use the location for her dream of a cryotherapy services, so we're seeking your approval to make this possible. During the initial process of having Wayne in the building, Mrs. Barbara Roberti, with her assistance, we established that the parking would be restricted to the rear of the building, which is roughly 900 square feet. The right-of-way is about 12 feet wide and 50 feet long, 1,900 square feet, sorry, and no additional parking in the front. Additionally, southbound drivers on 9D could not enter the parking lot by making a left turn.
All right, so with the parking, how would that, how's it going to kind of work?
So for parking, Jasmine is the owner, she works by herself, and her services are one-to-one, so there will only be two cars, including Jasmine, so Jasmine and her client at a time, maximum there could be three cars if she has a client waiting for the next service that's scheduled.
Okay. So that would be possibly at any given time, three cars, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
How do you access the parking?
The right-of-way.
Okay, which is along the side of the building, correct?
Yes.
All right, and you own both, you own both lots?
Yes.
Okay. And this will be the only use, you said, or are you also going to use it for something else?
That's the only use.
Just the only use, it's just for her office?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else?
What kind of question, when it was, when it was a cabinet store? Like, there was customers coming and going into that, like, like to look at?
I haven't seen any, so, but if we...
You owned it when it was a cabinet store?
Yeah.
So he would have customers coming and going?
Yeah, parking in the back, yeah.
And was that, that was fine at that time for that?
Right, because the building has always been used up until that time for retail sales, cabinets fall under that, so it was the same use.
Same parking situation, same, same area?
Right, it's a small building, so it's very limited.
So in actuality, a previous business would have had more customers and employees than what they're actually asking for, right?
Right. To some degree, yeah, I mean, based upon the formula, you know, for retail use. So this would be 100% professional service then at that point. Okay.
I'm going to double-check the, the parking requirement.
Yeah.
I think that it assumes a larger operation than this, and that based on what's being described, you know, I imagine a waiver would be granted. I, I'm assuming that the parking demand of this use of service is going to be higher than three parking spaces, in which case the planning board would need to enter...
It's an owner-operated, so she's the owner, she's the only operator, she's the only employee, and it's, she can only perform the service on one person at a time.
How many rooms are in that building?
Two.
Just two complete? So one would be an office, one would be a waiting room, or how would that, how would you separate that out? Okay. So there's no possibility of renting another room, or using a different room or part of that building for anything else except for this?
Correct.
And basically, she's, she's going to be the one performing the service with that person in another room, so really?
Yes. The building's only 750 square feet.
So maintenance men would no longer operate out of that building? It would just be...
Correct.
Okay. And that building's on septic, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So with a use change, it should go to the health department also, for them to approve a use change, so they're going to want information on the septic system. I think, I think a narrative describing the proposed use would be helpful?
Yeah.
And outlining the anticipated demand for parking... And, and outlining the anticipated demand for parking, the hours of operation, you mentioned that it's always, it's going to be one-on-one, you know, indicating that, because I think any approval that the board would have to, would be considering, would have to be predicated on those likely special operating details.
What's the door to the left, I'm sorry, I'm just curious, in the picture? What's, what's that door go to?
It's to the office.
Okay, so, yeah, and then it's that door, it's going to access the office?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So basically, on the left side would be just one whole office, on the right side is
one whole room, and there's nothing else?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, I'm trying to make sure, just like a.
So the, the parking demand would be between, I think probably five parking spaces, based on retail and service?
What is there actually room to park back there, right now?
You said it was 900 square feet in the rear?
1,900.
1,900 square feet in the rear.
But is it parkable, or is it?
Well, with turning and stuff, yeah.
Well, that's the thing, a lot of it goes to drive aisle.
Yeah, it's 40 feet wide, so.
Like, is it all clear?
Parking's always 20 feet.
1,900 square feet, or you have bushes and weeds?
A drive aisle is 24, so.
I assume.
The only question I have, is this is falling under personal service, that's why it's Malcolm or office, because if this woman decides to leave, and you've given them personal service, it's a small place, then what happens when the nail salon?
So that's more than 40.
Or the hairdresser wants to live there, and now that use is going to be more demanding.
So maybe you have to be.
It's a particular for this.
Right.
You have a condition to.
24 feet across, I'm sure it is.
Well.
So I believe that right-of-way is 10 feet.
I mean, that becomes, yeah, it becomes awkward, because it's a, I heard you trying to balance out, I mean, we're not, I mean, it's not like we're, well, I mean, if we give an approval tonight, I mean, as a condition, we can condition the approval, I'm assuming, right?
Well, there's no site plan, so you're giving it, you're just giving it, my question is, do we want this under personal service, or under medical for what she's doing, because then that's an office, which the size of it's so small, that even if she left, and we call it office, and you get a real, like an attorney, or a tax person, they're going to stay small, and a building that's small, with mainly one employee, and that would still work.
Right.
But if you call it personal service, now you're opening it up to, you could get five people doing nails in there, and that's eight cars.
Well, could it be like a, I don't know, like a special use permit that would be just to that one operator, and then it goes away when there's a change of business, change of hands on it? Because I know, that's been done in the past, I know, like with the. Yeah, but I don't think we're, we're not talking about that, that realm.
Those that you gave, like the yoga studio.
Something like that.
Yeah, but that's in a private residence.
Home office, yeah.
This is already a commercial area.
Well, what, so what did we classify that as, a home office, for the yoga studio?
Not that, not that yoga studio, it's a different.
That was in a residential home, so that would require a special use permit.
Yeah.
This is not a personal home, I'm just saying, whatever you decide, if this person leaves in six months or a year, I hope she stays forever, but if she doesn't, you can't commit and say, well, it's personal service to personal service, and she's a nail salon, because that's not going to work.
So Barbara, you're, you're thinking that this would not require a site plan?
No, I think it does, but I'm also, like, they're talking about approval, but I'm very nervous, because this is so tiny, that if you're going to give it a use, I'd rather it a use like in a medical office, because it's so small, you couldn't get a whole, you couldn't get six doctors.
What about the lockers next door?
It would stay a small office.
Well, if you start, we start getting into, you know, getting into the other lot, then it becomes an issue where the site plan comes in, well, you're going to have to, whatever.
Lot line consolidation.
Yeah, consolidating the lots, and doing things, and, yeah, it's kind, it's kind of an awkward, it's kind of an awkward piece of property.
Or redefine, well, that's the other issue, right, the, the rear of the property, I, I don't know how many parking spaces you could fit on a site plan, which is also meeting minimum requirements for drive aisle width, you know, space to backup, things like that, right? It, the dimensions of it get dicey, and what is, it's accessed along is that existing driveway, which looks to be about 10 feet wide, and it also looks like it's on the neighboring property, which is okay today, because they're both being, they're both owned by the same person, but I don't know what access easement one has over the other, if it includes that 10 feet, if the 10 feet would meet the requirement, and usually, we look for something a little bit wider, unless it's a one-way.
Didn't you say it was 12 feet?
We did a 12-feet easement.
But is it all on that piece, or a part on the empty piece, because that empty piece, and Mr. Padgy here worked for somebody on it, for that other building, on the other side of it?
Yeah.
And there's an easement that comes up one side, across the back and down, and left neither lot good enough for really a driveway on its own.
I believe it was five feet on, on either property.
The five feet was behind the vacant parcel, but coming down the driveway was 12 feet.
So it was six feet on either side?
Well, no, the right-of-way was 12, it was the right-of-way for 12 feet.
Along which?
For both, for both buildings.
But it's, I believe it straddles the property line, part of that right-of-way is on your property, well, they're both your, is on the subject property tonight, and part is on the vacant parcel.
I know, I think the, oh, maybe it does.
So the property line goes directly down the middle of that right-of-way?
That axis.
That's what you're saying? Is that what's going?
Say that again?
The property line is going directly down the middle of that right-of-way, so you have six feet of that on, on one side of the right-of-way, and six feet of the right-of-way on the other.
I actually have a, a map of it pulled up, so it was a.
Right, is that what?
What I have.
Kind of sounds, yeah.
I think either way, that the, the right-of-way was 12 feet, so that it didn't matter.
The overall.
It could matter in the future.
Well, that's, that's the, that's what we have to then think about, right? Today, you own both, but that may not always be true. Today, the tenant that we're talking about is going to be somebody who's doing one-on-one service, but if the use gets changed to retail and service, then that tenant can be switched out to anybody else who's doing different operations, that has different parking requirements, and that's where you get into dicey situations with very specific parking waivers that are granted for very specific situations, that will then have to be suitable for the next.
So when, when Wayne was using it, I didn't own the property next door, he was using the 12-foot right-of-way.
Which is permitted, yeah.
The property had the right to use the width, that it covered the property next door.
Yeah, but I didn't own, I didn't own that.
I, I'm not, I'm not questioning, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure that you guys, there, there is a right-of-way there, part of it's on the small property where Wayne was, part of it's on the vacant property, it benefits both this property, and also the property to the south, which has, has.
That was actually an application that we were working on years ago, so that's the
reason why I had some familiarity with it.
The, the problem is, just before you get into that other piece, it slims down, like, behind it, not going on the side of the building.
Right, so, so I'm, how would the board be in a position to approve this, without a?
Well, that's what, it's, that's what we're, I think we're getting to, is the point, it sounds like, if this change of use is going to intensify the use of the property, then it becomes basically, you know, we're going to have to move towards a site plan approval, that, that's, I think, the direction it's going here. It's not like a one-for-one type of thing, because you, you may have, you know, again, with the personal service, if it's an increase in the use, based upon, not based upon the one person, but based upon the square footage of the building, you know, the increased parking that's going to take place, you know, then, you know, the site plan approval then comes into play, because there is no current site plan, you know, that references it back, you know, as either-or, and I think that's, might be, if you really want to, you know, explore that option, the different uses, you might want to get a site plan that kind of lays out the, you know, some of the different scenarios, to make it more flexible for you.
No, is there any way she can operate while we're doing this, because she's paying me right now? Like, she, she was operating the whole time.
Well, she's operating all, all the time?
Yeah.
Was she shut down, or?
What's that?
That's. You just asked us if she could start operating, but you said she's been operating, so.
Yeah, she wasn't operating, she, I didn't realize, didn't come to the town and ask permission.
So is she not operating right now, because of this?
Now she's not, no.
Just to explore what Barbara was saying, suggesting about categorizing this as a different kind of use, whether it would, whether it could be categorized as a medical, that would then restrict.
Or even just office use, because like, medical office, so an office could be medical, it could be accounting, I just think as an office use, because what is she doing, cryo?
Cryotherapy.
What if she was to sell t-shirts, can she keep it as retail office?
Well, if you were to stay with retail, it just always was, I don't know how people parked there, but I guess it wasn't a very busy.
But they're going to need more parking, if they do.
But it's, it's already, it's already retail office, that's what I'm saying, right? It's already retail office, so.
And I use it as an office.
But if, but. So was it previously an office, or was it just retail?
It was just for him, and he owned it, but prior to him, cabinet guy was retail, and since I'm here in the 80s, it was always the trimming cake shop.
Yeah, right.
So, I don't know what it was prior to his own, but as far back as I can find in the files, it's always been a small, little retail shop with a very small, you know, people came and went, but it's in a tough spot to even stop, to go in there, because it's near the traffic light, you know, it's hard to get there and to get out.
It's a show that you can't.
I mean, retail can be a strong use, but unless they put something amazing there, I can't picture they'd have a lot of throw, the same with an office. I worry with service, because service in this area is a lot of nail salons, hair salons, those kind of businesses tend to have a lot more foot traffic, they appointments, and they back up.
More parking.
More parking, because you're going to have those people, you don't want to see three cars parking up into 9D. What is this business? That's, it's a mixed building, it's two floors, it's a little bit of this, a little bit of that, got a hairdresser in there.
Yeah, well, it should be just a.
But if it was medical office, it would be something that would be basically a like-for-like, if it was considered.
Yeah, or just office, like, I mean, it's so small, who could have an office, other than somebody and a secretary, or, or an administrative assistant?
Right.
Two partners, even a real estate office, you know, one person's coming to meet the broker, and they leave, it's so small, it couldn't be much of anything as an office.
And it would be difficult to get through site plan for anything, as we experienced with the next-door property, that it never went anywhere because of the difficulties, so, you know, if there's a way to, to get something in there that's like.
No, I know what you're saying, so, I mean, if it's, if it's just going to be an office use, then nothing's really changing, you're saying the office use was already there.
Right, because, you know, it was hard, she opened, didn't get a change of occupancy, you know, and then it was, that's why I brought him here, it's like, is it medical, is it a spa-type thing, and then it's personal service, so I didn't want to make that decision, so I'll bring it here and talk it out.
But as the proposed use, it's still been, it's similar to an office use, more or less?
Yes, but it could, it could be an office, it could be personal service, depends how you look at it.
Right, so which opens a door, that if they come back for something for personal service in the future, they'd have to come back again.
Right, because she has it as a spa, visiting.
But so, the current, the current proposal's more in line with an office use?
Right, so if we decide it's an office tonight?
Yeah.
Then at least if he comes back with a nail salon, I'm going to tell you no.
Okay.
Right.
Well, well, just to jump in, has a determination been issued by the building department?
No, she never came for a change of occupancy, they found it.
Oh, okay.
And so now it became a violation.
So the, the use needs to, for, I, in terms of what the use is, that's really going to be outside our jurisdiction, it'll be a zoning question, so they've got to get, so I think first, you would need, you know, perhaps they can get a determination, they get the determination, oh, okay, it's office, or it's medical, or whatever the case may be, and, you know, and then they can go from there.
So if I deem it an office, they can just, we can go on to a change of occupancy?
They could continue their use, because it's an existing, you know, not, you know, we're not, not conforming, but there's no site plan, so that existing use would continue on, until there's an actual change, which I, which I agree, because as I say, so, really, it's for us, if it's basically going to stay in line as an office, then there's really nothing, you know, we can approve this as-is.
Sure, it came up as a spa, though, type of thing, and so we're looking at all the spas, so now that begs the question, is it in line with a spa, and that's personal service?
Right.
So.
So if we do, okay, so.
Sounds like we're kicking it back to you.
Now, since you've described it in such great detail, for everyone here, including the TV, I'm going to deem it an office, since it's one-on-one.
Thanks.
But anything else?
No.
You already know what it's going to entail, okay?
Okay, all right, so with that, with the proposed use as an office, for the most part, does anybody have any objection to the application? No. It's in front of us, they can continue on as the same, similar type uses going forward, unless, as deemed by the zoning administrator, or the building department, that there is a physical change of use, which then would kick in a full site plan back to, back to the board. Sound reasonable?
Right.
Okay, right?
Yep.
Okay, we have to make a motion on that?
Yeah.
No motions.
No motion, good, all right, so that's, so you guys are all set to go forward?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Take care.
Okay. All right, next item on the agenda is extension regarding Chelsea Farms subdivision.
Good evening, George Lithgow, J&amp;G Law, I wasn't expecting to come tonight, but I did receive an invitation, so I thought I should come and explain. The applicant and I both understand, you've decided at the last meeting, no further extensions. We did have a follow-up informal meeting with chairman, supervisor, forgive me if I butcher your name, but number.
Paratiko, C. F. K.
So, we had a meeting, it was constructive, basically, Mr. Silver said, I'll do my best to get this moving, he cut the price, he did get some interest, he's continuing to get interest, but he's not getting a buyer, so what I was, the message I got was, the, the subdivision is going to expire, and it is, but it expires on the 27th. The reason for putting that tail on the letter, which says, we'd like an extension if possible, through completion of the restoration, is for two reasons, one is, and the primary purpose of that letter was to confirm we will restore it pursuant to the plan, and just to clarify that the work would be taking place within the next planting season, which is basically September, by the end of September, that work should be done. One thing that complicated a little bit for me is, when I went out to the property on the north side of Chelsea Bridge, there's a utility line, and I do not recall, did not recall, and haven't had a chance to look back, where the utility line of the planting shown on the approved plan, you know, if that reflects the utility clearance that's necessary, but that's a detail we can take care of with the planter, because that work should be done in, you know, mid-September. So we're, the, the purpose of the letter was to commit to doing it, tell you when we're doing it, and to leave open the option that there may be need for some clarification of the restoration plan, so that we're not planting in the middle of the utility right-of-way, that's the main purpose. The extension, basically, really, all we're looking for, if there is interest, we can't get closure on that interest, but if we could, and we came back to you in August and said we do have a buyer, here's the deal, we're set, and, you know, the schedule for going forward, I would hope the board would entertain that, you know, not just throughout all that work that was done, and entertain the possibility of allowing it to be consummated, recognizing that that's not probable, but it is possible, if we can't come to you at the beginning of August and say, we have, you know, we're, we're working on the contract right now, we'll withdraw the application for the extension, because it's, we know you don't want to do it, and I can't come up with a good reason otherwise for doing it, so we're not trying to, you know, do something that violates the direction we got from the board last time, but what we're trying to do is, if, if something does come in, and it is possible to get it to a point where we can. if, if something does come, uh, come in, and it is possible to get it to a point where we can come to you and say, this is a real deal, we'll come back and tell you that. So, I hope the board will not take this the wrong way. The current extension expires on July 27th. As long as you make an extension request before the expiration, it can be considered at future meetings. That's the only purpose to that. Is there any question about the restoration schedule? That's, that's really...
No, I think that was all put together with the original plans, correct? That was submitted from, yeah, actually, it was before. So, yeah, that was a few engineers ago.
The, the plan, the plan does say, I mean, there's a plan for restoring. The, the issue is, the bond provides it when the subdivision approval expires, or is not granted, that we have to do it. So we'd like to clarify when this would be done, and make sure it's acceptable.
So I'll leave it for, oh, any discussion by the board on this?
As far as the, as far as the scheduling of the restoration?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah. The schedule, I mean, I mean, if you do, I mean, it makes sense to plant and fall.
Yeah, I, I would say that the next planting season, following the expiration of the bond, would be the time to do that, no sense in planting it on the middle of a heat wave. Yeah, that's...
No, they're gonna continue, they'll continue the bond until the, until the restoration's complete. So. I mean, anybody, anybody from the board have any questions regarding this?
No.
I mean, we're not, still not entertaining an extension, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so, I mean, as long as you extend the bond to the, you know, to the date, you know, to the...
September.
Yeah, and then, you know, it's gotta be, I guess, at that point, would be planted, I guess, prior to the expiration, or the bond would have to be extended.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
It's nice to see you guys.
Okay, nice to see you as well.
Sorry.
Can I just ask, when your planting is done, that you deliver to me a certification that it was planted in, in performance with the plan that was originally accepted? Cause we'll go out and check, but it would be nice if the landscaper's certified.
Well, I, I don't know if the landscaper has been out yet, but, uh, one of the objectives would be to have them go out,
Whoever does.
Look at what's there, and make sure it either is gonna be the same, or it gets, who, do we need to come back to the board for approval, or can we...
Well, why not, let's see what the ones...
See what it is. Fair enough. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Okay, all right. So the last thing on the agenda is, missly, any item regarding the code changes that we discussed in the workshop? I guess it's, uh...
Bruce, we don't have to vote on that?
No, it's nothing we... Nothing to vote on.
Okay.
So. At this point, the, um, regarding the code changes, I guess, you know, we do have, well, board members now have copies of both local halls that were being presented. Heard a discussion earlier, it looks like we'd like to schedule, I guess, a workshop meeting for July the 23rd, at 5:00 PM. Entertain a motion to have the secretary publish in the paper that we'll be having a workshop that evening.
You say move?
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I was just gonna say, I, I hope, well, I'd like it, if not that meeting, but that we cover not only the code changes, but we talk a bit about the process for the code changes.
Procedure, yeah.
And the comp plan changes.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we could discuss that too, I think we need to, I think we need to get...
Should be a set process for that.
Yeah.
Here's the draft.
I think, I think there's a lot of, I think there's been so much discussion over the past few years about some of these items. It's not just, you know, one section, you know, or definitions in a code, it's like, it's section, it's the whole section of the subdivision code that, you know, everybody had, you know, concerns about. You know, even the zoning code, with the comprehensive plan, hasn't been touched in 14 years, I guess, since it was approved, so we, things that need to be addressed and updated. You know, everybody needs to kinda bring their thoughts to the table. And maybe, you know, with that, maybe there could be a collaborative path of where this is gonna go, and how long it's gonna take to get there, but, you know, at least that could be determined after we, everybody puts their input into this.
Yeah, this is just the first of many changes to come down, but, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. But again, if there's these, some of these things are involving changes, you know, and when you go changing code, are we gonna be going backwards and changing definitions again? Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's the problem, I mean, cause you don't have what it's actually tied to. You know, and if it's clarification, again, you know, you're changing one, you know, one definition, because it's in, it's in the comprehensive plan, but then the zoning code is referring, you know, or the subdivision code is referring to that term that's actually in the subdivision code, why are we changing the term? Those are my concerns, sorry. But we'll discuss that on the, you know, on the 23rd.
Supervisor will be here too, on that meeting?
We'll have to, we'll have to, actually, ask the secretary to send a memo inviting the secretary to that workshop, uh, sorry, the supervisor to that workshop meeting.
Yeah, that way he can let us know his rationale behind how he's doing this.
Yeah. Um, anybody, actually, I mean, anybody that was involved with those code changes?
Is that the town board?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I mean, it might be, it, it might be difficult for them to do on short notice, to get the entire town board, but if there's town board members, I guess, without them having a forum, that would probably be helpful.
I would ask Mr. Capacini, who would you like to...
It'd be, leave it up to, right, leave it up to the town supervisor to make the decision.
Yeah, if you wanted a zoning representative.
But whoever, you know, but whoever was involved with the, you know, the drafting, you know, of some of these things, or if it was just him himself, and, you know, at least maybe we'll kinda answer some unanswered, you know, answer some questions that everybody has.
I did hear him say that he was also open, not only, we're having a special meeting, but he was also open to, you know, some sort of workshop beyond that.
Beyond that, yeah, and then I agree, I, I, I think it's gonna need more than just, you know, for the scope of the things that are gonna take place in the future going forward, I think they do need to have, you know, and I think that would be helpful to have a collaborative, you know, body of all the different entities to kinda sit at the table, to kinda give them the, you know, give some input.
What time is the workshop?
We said 5:00 PM.
Five?
Five.
And Bruce, just to clarify, you don't need our office at that meeting? If you decide that you want us there, then you could always...
Yeah, I, I don't think you need to.
It didn't seem like there were those two definitions.
Obviously, Malcolm's done a lot of, you know, his office has done a lot of some of the stuff in the past, so. And then again, if, Kyle, if you have any, if you have any thoughts regarding any of these drafts, you know, please forward them to us ahead of the meeting.
Okay.
When we discuss them. And if I, I have a couple of questions, I'll make sure I send them off to you ahead of the...
Say that last part again, I missed that.
Sorry.
And then if I have any, if I have any questions, or if any of the board members come to me with any questions, I'll get them off to you ahead. Maybe you could answer those prior to the meeting as well.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, so with that,[1770.81]